We can give Jill another minute. All right, welcome everybody to the August 27 Tourism Committee meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Stevens.
Okay, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, where we stand, where we stand, where we stand.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cosmic.
Here.
Commissioner Zanger.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Gordon.
Here.
Commissioner Pagrin. Absent. Commissioner Pillsbury.
Here.
Thank you very much. We'll go to acknowledge certificate of posting. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
First, we have a second.
I'll second.
Person a second. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Cosmic.
Yes.
Commissioner Zanger.
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan.
Yes.
Commissioner Pillsbury.
Yes.
Five, wait, one, two, three, four.
Thanks so much.
Five oh oh.
Oh, sorry.
I forgot how many are here. Sorry.
No problem. That takes us to public comments. This is up for items that are not appearing on the agenda. No action can be taken. Do we have any public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please come up to the podium on Zoom. Please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And it looks like I have no public comment.
Great, thank you so much. That'll take us to minutes 5.8 approved Tourism Advisory Committee Action Minutes for the June 25 Special Committee Meeting. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, is there public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please come up to the podium on Zoom. Please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Great, that would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Person a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cosmic.
Here, yes.
Commissioner's anger.
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan.
Yes.
Commissioner Pillsbury.
Yes.
Five oh oh, motion passed.
All right, great. So that would bring us to our regular agenda. We have two items on today's regular agenda. The first item is discuss comprehensive traffic management strategies for Pinnacles National Park. Understanding issues, data needs, and implementing solutions, providing feedback and direction. And we have Benu Abraham, the Executive Director of the Council of Governments of Samuel County here. Thank you, Benu. How are you?
I'm good. Thanks for having me. And thanks for the opportunity to have this discussion. I am again, I'm Benu Abraham. I'm the Director for CAG and LTA. LTA deals with the transit or the public transportation part. And CAG deals with the regional road transportation projects. So since I'm coming in a little cold today, I just want this to be more of an open discussion format. And this will help to get a better understanding of what your perspectives are. And then I can go back and then take this information that you provide me today and come back with more targeted solution at a later date. So that, just so that you know, my goal, and if my goal is different from yours, please let me know. I don't, I came up with this goal in a vacuum, so it's, it's open for any interpretation. It's to make sure that we are focusing our limited resources on the most important issue. And what I'm looking for today in terms of your perspective are what are the mobility, top mobility challenges we should be solving to support you in this tourism promotion endeavor that you are taking on. So your goal is bigger than mine. I have just a tiny part of it. And what can transportation do for that? If it is bringing people into the county? Or is it moving people around within the county? And I just want to hear what are the top priorities? Because all of it is transportation, but we don't have all the resources needed to address everything. So what are your top priorities? To just get us started, I have a few, I have a sheet in that I think got handed out to all of you.
Yeah.
And that's just my thoughts on trying to direct the conversation and to keep it focused. We don't have to follow that. There is no rules. I am not here to say, did you check A, B, and C? I just want us to get started on some conversation. So if you would like it to be a different conversation, please let me know. Otherwise, I would just like to start off with. When, when you think of tourism and mobility in San Benito, what kind of visitor experience do you want us to create? Or in other words, from your perspective, what should mobility look like? And what should it best support tourism in San Benito? I would love to hear you.
So I think traditionally we'll go to public comment, but I think we can go piece by piece here. The reason this came, came up though, just more broadly is discussion about the potential for transportation to and from Pinnacles and how to help alleviate. One of the biggest challenges at Pinnacles National Park is that it's, it's overpacked and there isn't enough parking. And we want to try to get more people into Pinnacles, have a better experience, and just be able to actually draw more people to the park eventually. And so the challenge that we have right now is that there are, you know, at times there are several hour waits to get into the park. And as a committee and as jurisdictional leaders, we're looking for, you know, solutions to that. And the, the most generic solution, and I think the best solution that's come up is to look at the possibility of whether transit can play a role, you know, bringing people to and from the park, whether we can perhaps partner with the Ag District and look at a park and ride option, perhaps at the old golf course. The Ballado Golf Course ground seems like the most logical place. And then looking at whether there are opportunities to have pickup and/or drop off spots in the two cities. To, you know, bring people, you know, to not only have an opportunity to bring people to the park, but also to promote people spending time in the cities and shopping in the cities. So that, that's really how it came up, but we certainly can go through each question. But I think really to focus the conversation, if we can get to that conversation unless others want to go through other points.
Can I, can I just add?
Yeah.
Elaborate on, so yeah, completely on the same page as, as Supervisor Cosmic in terms of the experience at Pinnacles National Park. I think that as a city in this county, we want to look for opportunities to bring people to strategic locations in an effort to make their experience in our city as well as on their way to Pinnacles more enjoyable, but also for the city to take advantage of the opportunities, especially in terms of economic development and in, in support of our local businesses, especially our small businesses. So the idea of looking at when somebody goes to a place like Pinnacles, what is it that they're trying to do? They're trying to have like an all day experience that maybe is they take in the local sites. They maybe have some food. They want to relax. They want to enjoy. And they want, and we think that making that experience as smooth and easy as possible will encourage more and more people to come. So as Supervisor Cosmic talked about, the parking is challenging as well as just accessing the trails there. So looking at how transit can help with that, the idea of maybe having a shuttle that can go over there, maybe a couple of shuttles or even more from both cities at strategic locations, starting at strategic locations with opportunities for people to park and then get on a shuttle. Maybe at staggered times, depending on when they're going to arrive there, as well as staggered times so that maybe they can stop, peruse the cities, spend some money, enjoy what the local businesses have to offer, then get on a shuttle, get to the Pinnacles, come back, and then do the same. So something to that effect, right? So, so that there's an overall experience and we, I think, have an opportunity to be able to, I don't know if the control is the right word, but, but encourage them to park in certain locations within the two cities and the county as a way for them to have a broader experience when they're coming to enjoy a hike at the Pinnacles. As well as to help to alleviate the, the parking and the traffic going into Pinnacles. So that's sort of what I'm thinking. I'm thinking like an overall vision. Transportation and your role, Benu, is crucial to that overall experience. Although you're, you minimize by saying it's a small little piece. In fact, I think it is probably one of the most crucial pieces. So I just wanted to add that as like a vision of what it could be like and partnering with the Pinnacles National Monument, I think is an incredible idea as well as with some of the local, like Ballado Park and Tres Pinos and San Juan Batista and Hollister, in particular our downtown, but other locations as well. I think all of those would be great opportunities for the cities and the county.
Supervisor, oh, Mr. Pillsbury.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I just wanted to support what Stevens was saying about sort of driving presence. I think it's on.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry. Check, check. Thank you. So I think the, the big opportunity here is to make sure that transit through San Benito County on the way to Pinnacles does not move through the periphery of the community, but becomes central to what we do and how we communicate to people who come here for the first time with Pinnacles as the anchor. When they get here, they discover something they didn't expect. We've got wonderful small businesses. We have, we have breweries. We have, we have a sake distiller. We have wineries. We have shops. We have restaurants. We have all these wonderful places to spend your time. So I agree 100% that we should be anchoring people in the city centers. And then using those as places for them to wait, to enjoy, to return back after they've experienced the Pinnacles. Because that's, that's where we build a long-term relationship with these folks. And when I look at the sort of surface of opportunity, if you will, Benu, and I think it breaks into two things and you can't do everything all at once. I think for me, it breaks into things that are sort of infrastructure versus programming.
Right.
And so on the infrastructure front, we have some, some real systemic challenges. We have sort of profound degradation of our local roads, especially critical roads. We also have no cell coverage in South County, which does present sort of a problem for people who haven't been here before. Being able to get ready for the trip, being able to adapt to any changing travel conditions. A flat tire could derail your whole weekend. And I do think that's something to perhaps keep in mind, find a way to get support for coverage on Highway 25 on the way down. And then on the programming front, there's both scheduled sort of opportunities for moving people. For instance, a regular shuttle that takes you from downtown San Juan or downtown Hollister down to Pinnacles. But then also the opportunity for ad hoc service and support. We have a, a small taxi service here in San Benito County, but we're largely outside of the mandate for Uber, Lyft, and the like. And people from outside this community are using these as, you know, as a full surrogate for their own car ownership or how they think about traveling. So it is something maybe to partner with companies who could carry the lift, quote unquote, I meant L I F T, you know, and maybe find companies who are willing to partner with us to support in, in an efficient way. My own experience as a small business owner here in San Benito has been that, you know, most of the coach companies, you know, the bus companies out of Monterey County have actually let us know that they don't service San Benito County at this point because of their fear of the roads damaged their vehicles. And so I do think that's something to toss into the mix, although I don't have, I don't have a full answer for how to fix that. That's not my mandate.
No, this is great. Issue exploration is the start of looking for solutions. So I'm, I love to hear all the issues that you think of.
Thank you.
Yeah. Sure.
And Jordan?
To, to continue on with Christians' comments, bringing them in from, bringing folks in from Monterey County and Santa Clara County. We currently have a bus from Gilroy from the outlets. But where does that, that take us? How, how far can we go with that? Where are the stops along the way? And how do we, how do we get those folks moving into our cities, into the remote reaches of our county that are super special? And then to ultimately get down to the Pinnacles. So there's, there's all of these little facets that, that we need to incorporate. Commissioner Stevens, Commissioner Pillsbury's ideas and, and, and bring them forward.
Supervisor Zanger?
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot to add on to what's already been said, other than just for anyone that is curious. Someone might say the simple solution, why don't you just build more parking lots, right, in the Pinnacles? National parks are not too fond of new parking lots in the parks. So that's really one of the main reasons we can't just solve it like that. Additionally, that wouldn't really help with, you know, what we're, what we're really talking about here as far as moving people to these centers and, and sort of the economic development angle of it as much as maybe a shuttle system would. Also, it wouldn't really be a good long-term solution because they would just have to continue building more because it'd fill up quite quick. So that's just where this shuttle idea came from. I know I, we've, I think I had a meeting, Supervisor Cosmic and I spoke with the previous superintendent of the park and she basically explained that to us at some point. She said, we got to go the route of shuttles because, you know, new parking isn't really going to happen. I mean, it's in a small scale maybe, but not in the degree that we need it. So that's where a lot of this is coming from, I will just say.
Yeah, and just to try to bring things together, we were talking a little earlier about really what we're talking about here is a target market of the Bay Area and the Central Coast region are largely the people that are coming to Pinnacles and want to come here. And the goal here is to get not just more people willing to take that, you know, couple hour drive, but to get people to stay overnight, which ties into the second item on the agenda, of course, which is try to bring more hotels to the region. Ideally, would they stay overnight and they spend money at the shops, they get picked up? Or they drive to the park and ride, or they drive to the park? But for me, my thinking is the first priority, you know, I think the long-term strategy would be to, to, because we're dealing with funding issues here. I'm, I'm also happen to be on CAG with Mayor Stevens and we have, there are funding issues. So you can't just say, CAG, LTA, give us some buses, give us some routes. That's just not how it works. So for me, the first priority would be to engage with the Ag District. Because that's how you can really knock out, you know, a significant portion of the parking issue. And to really focus on trying to get a park and ride situation going as soon as possible at the Ag District while we coincidentally look at what locations might be ideal in the, in the cities. But it would seem to me that from a cost standpoint, the park and ride would probably be more efficient first because the bus would be closer, of course, to Pinnacles. And you'd get more trips back and forth out of the park and ride than perhaps doing a whole loop around the county. So that's kind of my goal would be to try to engage with the Ag District. I think that's the first step. We need to pursue and explore what funding opportunities there might be out there to establish a park and ride situation. And then, and then to look at going from there, once we have, you know, more of the logistics as far as how many rides, and that would be on, that would be where you would really come into play is figuring out the strategy of how many rides are appropriate, how many drivers, buses, et cetera. And so that's kind of where I'm at as far as what are the next steps? Because we always like to, it's great to have a presentation, but it would be really nice to have a next step, which I think would be consulting with the agricultural district. And then also consulting with the two cities, which of course is convenient because, you know, we're represented here, on what would be ideal locations in those cities for park and rides for the Pinnacles. So I'm hoping we can come out of here, I know an ad hoc is always the simple solution, but that's probably the solution is to try to set up a, a situation where we can involve Benu, our staff from LTA, and multiple members of this committee and/or administration from the jurisdictions. We don't want to probably get too heavy with, off the bat here, but it just to have an initial conversation with the Ag District about the potential and what it would take to move forward with a park and ride and then those conversations with the cities. Am I off base with the direction as far as just, are there other thoughts on what the next steps would look like, basically?
I would just, the only guy that would see if Benu has any ideas on what that looks like, if that is.
That would be, I think, considering she is, yes, and you, we're kind of like volunteering your services here, Benu.
Thank you.
You would be a really instrumental part of, we would need your help, obviously. So I think having you involved and engaging with the Ag District and maybe having a couple of the members from our committee tag along might be, but you go ahead. Tell, tell us.
So everything you've said so far is making my eyes sparkle. I love a challenge and I love to initiate you. More than that, this is in line with what LTA was trying to achieve over the next three years. So it's good to have this conversation because we are at the, at the very first step of what is the goal for LTA over the next three to five years. That's the, our vision blueprint, and then we put in the pieces that will help us get to that. So this is very much timely and I think there is a big role that we can take on and I'll be happy to take. I, I love this kind of project, so I'll be happy to be participating and being engaged in it. Just random thoughts right now because I don't have, I just responding to what I heard. Park and ride, wonderful idea. I know the success of a park and ride depends on what things you can add to the destination once you park your car and get out of your car. People have this fear of losing control. They want to be, they want to be assured that they can do the things they want. They have access to things they want and they can get there on the bus and back safely. So if you put a park and ride, one of the things I would recommend is look for what other things are around that, that park and ride so that people are not feeling pressured if they have to wait five minutes or 10 minutes. They, maybe there is a convenience store, maybe there is a coffee shop, maybe there is a hotel, maybe there is a restaurant. I don't know. I'm just throwing out ideas here.
Food trucks. Downtown.
Winery or connections. If there is like, again, I'm just throwing out ideas. I'm not recommending you do any of this. If there is a bike share program where you can just take, hop on the bike and then tour the wineries or tour the city or something. or tour the city or something that is a short within a mile or two of things like that. These are things that would make the park and ride more attractive for people to use. And that will also help with the economic development piece of it. So wonderful idea. Shuttle, I am all on board for that. As you know, the only constraint I have is funding. And that's not to say we won't get funding because we, in the last two years, we have brought in about $10 million for transit. So that's not to say we cannot do it, but we are fixing a broken system. And that system is now getting repaired from back in 20, since COVID. So we are now building the foundation so that we can build on top of it. So it's going to take a little while. I do not have the money or the buses to run something next week or next month, but this is where the planning comes into play. We plan for what you want. So helping us define what is your goal really helps in focusing, where should we focus? Which grant should we go for? Another piece is the technology piece. Maybe there is limited parking at the, at the Pinnacles, but we can have like more technology, like you reserve your parking spot. So when it runs out of parking spot, they are more compelled to, it's more of a behavioral change. When you start from home, you feel like, okay, there's a park and ride facility. So I can park there, I can go there. It's more of the comfort level you bring into the people who are tourists, who may not know our region, who may not know our roads to say that, well, there's no parking, but that's okay. We got you covered. We have shuttles that's going, we have park and ride, we have all the facilities for you. If you want to stay a night, we have the hotels for you, just reassurance. That's more of a behavioral conditioning that you're doing, right? So we can look at technology pieces, which are really actually comparatively easier to get money for than anything else. Cause California is all about innovation and technological innovation grants relatively easy to get. So that's one thing. And then we, one thing we need to do is explore what other, because we are not the only one who is having this challenge. What other park, national parks, other areas that are tourist and destination have done and they are successful in. Did they do a park and ride? What did they have in their park and ride? How did they come to that location? What consideration were done? So we don't have to spend the whole amount of money. We are learning from what they already learned. So those are some of the things we can do. And then throwing out some data needs. If we have limited resource and we cannot put shuttle every 20 minutes for a whole day, when should we do it? How many days should we do it? Should we just target the weekends? Should we just look at Friday and Saturday? Those are all information that will help direct the resources to the most critical information. So that's, that's just, I'm just throwing out a bunch of things. But I will take all the things you have given me and then put it into a more organized, structured way and come back with some plans or recommendations.
Further thoughts? On next steps? So you're, what you're saying is now would this need to go to the LTA COG?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you could put together and refine based on the conversation today, some, some more data and options?
Yes.
Do you need any assistance from, because again, we're really grateful that you're here and we're asking you to go out of your way and step up to the challenge here. Do you have anything else from us that you would recommend?
One thing I would love.
Start talking to the Ag District yet, or do you want?
It would be great to have that conversation because even though we don't know what exactly we are doing, I want to hear their perspective, what are their concerns, what are their opportunities that we can have common grounds on. So that would be helpful to know.
And would you want the cities to perhaps start the conversation if they're willing?
Please.
Just thoughts, because we're going to have to, everybody's going to have to be on the same page here for this to work. There's going to have to be.
When you are ready, whenever you are ready.
Yeah, well, ultimately I'll just speak for the City of Hollister. I think what, as we're engaged in this kind of a conversation, ultimately we want to look at where are the greatest opportunities for supporting business and economic development? I think, you know, I think speaking with our Ag community is, is fine. And I think there are some opportunities there, but ultimately I think bringing them to the city centers is more beneficial. And so figuring that out, I think we can do both, right? We can figure out what that might look like, but we need to have a way to get them, like if we do have a park and ride, to get them from that point to their ultimate destination, right? We need to be able to have an opportunity, we need to be able to, to offer options so that visitors can get to their ultimate destination at the Pinnacles. But yeah, I certainly would want to work with Benu and, and maybe Mayor Jordan from San Juan Batista and have conversations from the city perspective as well as include the Ag community and maybe others, maybe. So I think just starting that conversation, I'm, I'm open to that.
Suggestion, the cities maybe can engage on strategies from the city side and then to others, whoever would want to do that.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, Mayor Jordan, we owe each other lunch, so I think we can certainly have that conversation and then reach out to Benu for sure. Yeah, yeah.
Does anyone have interest in engaging with the Ag District?
I can certainly start from, at the City of Hollister with the contacts that I have in the Ag, with the Ag community.
Willingness to look at a park and ride.
A park and ride, yeah.
The three headed.
Sure, sure. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay. So Mayor Stevens, Mayor Jordan and Benu are being tasked with getting this started from the discussion standpoint. And Benu is going to come back with more data and information and we really appreciate that so much. So thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be there. Yeah, we'll do that. And so is there a public comment before we move on?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please come up to the podium on Zoom. Please press star nine under the raised hand icon. Hi, I'm Irene with Visit San Benito County. And I had previous discussions with the 33rd Ag District with Dara Tobias at Balada Park, and they were willing to have that location be a park and ride. And there's already plenty of parking there, so we wouldn't have extra costs of putting parking in. So that might be a, a good option. Or you mentioned the 33rd also owns the old golf course, so that could be an option. And then I think the traffic concerns on 25 are mainly on the weekends and it's probably seasonal. So if we needed to start it off, you know, a little slower, that, that could be a consideration on, on looking at what those time periods are. So we get that coverage and then expand it later. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Irene.
I have no further.
We have Peter Hernandez.
Thank you, Ian. The Tourism Advisory Council, I think this is pretty awesome that you guys even started this. It's obviously been a passion of mine when I served alongside you, Supervisor Cosmicky. Haven't had a chance to serve alongside Supervisor Zanger, but I know, and actually I'm really grateful for you guys bringing on definitely a very experienced individual, Christian Pillsbury with, in the wine industry. So, I mean, the bottom line is, you know, the biggest thing that I've really been thinking about with this conversation is commerce technically is like water, right? It feeds the regions that it enters into. And, and park and ride, I think is an excellent idea. I know it's, it's a good starting point. I think when it comes down to like trying to figure out how to try to create the most excitement, obviously by default support. You know, having a park and ride in spheres of influence where there's actually a lot of already interest or activity, I would argue downtown is, is, would be one of them. I know there's been talks about it like a welcome center, you know, and the welcome center, I don't know how far that's gotten. But just as a point of interest, I mean, if you think about anybody who Google searches a, a, a national park or any interest to go to it, right? Some of the things they're considering is a place to stay, they're considering places to visit. They want to know their region, they want to understand its history. There's all, there's, there's got, there's basically that stream of water flooding into certain Google searches, right? As a simple example. And that causes those folks to obviously start to plan their trip. You know, a park and ride should be part and parcel, maybe even with the Chamber of Commerce as, as an example. As far as funding it, I, I, I did a little bit of research myself and I know that there are grant funds like through the National Park Service that you could work with. It's obviously in their best interest since Pinnacles is a national park. There's user fees that you can maybe collaborate with the current, with, with Pinnacles and see if those user fees could be allocated for, to help support and maybe do some kind of a, you know, a collaboration of funds basically to, to support that park and ride. But I also believe there's, there's got to be a focus and I understand being in, in, in local office that there's a sentiment of revenue neutral as a big focus. But technically speaking, you really can't plan for success. You plan for fail or, or you can't plan for success if you don't basically build up that goal, right? How to, how to get there. And I know personally as a small business owner in downtown that we have tours coming into our community and they're very much from urban city centers. You know, there's obviously that, that burnout that, you know, you, you, you live the nine to five in, in Santa Clara and San Francisco, you, you want to get away. We're a perfect staycation location, you know? And then I call, I'd like to say that tourism dollars are the lowest impact dollars, which means they come, they visit, they spend, they enjoy, but they leave and they leave their money with them. So that's one of the negative implications of basically being a bedroom community. But that being said is if there was a focus of, of one allocating funds for future planning, right? The, I know that when I sat on the board also, we had a, we had a, a goal to try to do some, some sort of a basically a T O T type funding through the, the hotel years as an opportunity. And I, I don't know how far that's gotten, but if there was a way to allocate funds is my point. To try to ultimately target these big city, uh, city centers to try to basically get them excited about this new opportunity to come visit Pinnacles National Park. But, you know, and then from there, trying to basically get the business community involved in the conversation, get them excited about it, cross promotion opportunities. I think by default, everything will flow over from there. And I also appreciate Irene coming. I, I think she's been an amazing influence for our community. I thank you guys for your focus and anything I can do to help. I obviously have a lot of friendship in the business community. I love to see this thrive. I really do. I think this is an amazing opportunity. It's a long-term prospect, but without vision, you can't get anything done. So I appreciate you guys' vision in doing this. Thank you.
And in light of the speaking, it reminded me of, we should certainly engage with the national park itself and the Pinnacles Park Foundation. So maybe that could be something that either we do now or once we get those initial steps out of the way to make sure that that's, I don't know if there's thoughts on that as far as, because they're certainly going to play a role or there might be opportunities for grant funding as well.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. I think, I think so. I mean, we're going to need a lot of things from them, like, for instance, like the data that we're going to need as far as when, what times, things like that, the grant opportunities. So I don't, I, I don't recall, I believe, I don't know if we have a contact there, if they got a new permanent superintendent yet or not. Gracie, she, she works there.
So they have gotten a new superintendent. Her name is Ally Allison. I don't recall her last name, but she's in the process of getting on boarded. So we haven't gotten her contact information, but we'll share that as soon as available.
What I would suggest then is maybe if anyone else wants to volunteer for that engagement, to at least reach out to the superintendent of the park and/or the, the foundation, just to at least get a conversation started about where we're going. Do either of you, otherwise I will certainly.
I'll do it.
Throw my hat in the room.
I'm happy to participate if, if I've got the introduction, of course. I'm dominant on how busy you are.
Pick one or the other or do it together, both of them, or there's the foundation and there's the superintendent piece.
I'm happy to interface with the park.
With the superintendent? You want to try it for the foundation?
Sure.
Or we can do it together either.
Sure, yeah, yeah, we can.
Okay, all right. And then if Irene's, it would be grateful, I would be, I'd be grateful if you might be able to collaborate with the, the mayors on the conversation with the Ag District that you had as well. If maybe, if you have an interest in certainly engaging and taking part, it would be much appreciated from Visit San Benito. Anything further? Good conversation. We had public comments, so we, that would take us to the next item, which is receive an update from the Hotel Incentive Program, ad hoc discuss and provide feedback in further direction. And we have a report. Basically, we have a template or a draft recommendation in front of us. And so who from the ad hoc or multiple people would like to kick it off and kind of let us know where we're at?
Uh, yeah, I'll start real briefly and then I'll, I'll pass it over to, to Christian there. So yeah, this is the, the draft we had emailed out to all the members earlier. It's similar to what was presented before, but with some modifications based on comments from the committee. Lowering some of the, I think some of the thresholds as far as room keys and things like that, so that we cast sort of a wider net to get just, you know, more opportunity, right? More opportunity for more hotels to, to pop up and take advantage of this incentive. I'm trying to think, so as well, I mean, we, we can look through it and we just want to say that we want to hear all the feedback today. My, my intention today ideally is we talk some things out here and then we can keep pushing this forward, moving it along rather than going back to the ad hoc. We'd like to be able to get this moving forward to, I guess, the Board of Supervisors next. So that's where I'm at with it. I hope we can work out any discrepancies and any suggestions here now. Beyond that, I will say that we left the, we left the renovation tiers. We thought that was important that you could take a, a place that is, is currently not really what we're looking for and you could, you could put money in it. We want people to be able to take advantage of that as well. We want to incentivize that sort of behavior, that total upgrade of a hotel, whether it's just the additional rooms or just the upgrade of the facilities. I think that's where I'll leave it for now. Go to the rest of the ad hoc. If there's any other comments on this?
Sure. And Ian, I'll represent the rest of the ad hoc because background is not here to pitch in today, but she's been critical to the development of this planning. So from my perspective, the important thing for me was to make sure that as we're trying to drive interest in new development, we don't accidentally disadvantage any constituencies that already live and operate here in San Benito County. And moreover, I wanted to make sure that we didn't accidentally put in place a long-term drain on San Benito's operating funds, right? So anything here, all benefit is intended to come from accretive generated, generated T O T. So it's not money that's already been planned. This would all be surplus, for lack of a better word. New development and renovation are the two primary categories that are considered. New development's pretty self-explanatory across different baskets. But then new development, we were conscious of the fact that new development could accidentally disadvantage existing businesses within San Benito or people who are looking to acquire, for instance, a hotel or some similar property and renovate and relaunch. So we wanted to make sure that we didn't accidentally carve those folks out. And so under renovation, major renovation or transformational upgrade basically cover the idea of an existing operator that wants to be able to take advantage of support to be able to put investment into a property to help them level up to meet the new opportunities that are going to emerge through the work that we're doing in things like Pinnacles. But then transformational upgrade, the idea that we had discussed there was you could have an entrepreneur come from outside, acquire a pre-existing property and, you know, renovate and elevate it without being accidentally dropped out of this program. It works as well in taking cues from the Development Plan Hospitality Priority Area, which has already been passed by Board of Supervisors in sessions past. And also trying to focus investment intentionally on, on local resources as opposed to having that kind of support come from out of county. So we've, I feel that we've done fair work here. We're confident in the recommendation and we hope you feel good about sending it to administration to get feedback and then move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think what we can do is go to public comment and then we'll bring it back.
You'd like to make a comment in chambers, please come up to the podium on Zoom. Please press star nine under the raised hand icon. I have no public comment.
Okay, you're back. Mayor Jordan?
Thank you. I appreciate the, the smaller, the tier one room key and the major renovation and the transformational upgrade. Hugely important to San Juan because we're so small and don't have a whole lot of property. We have two existing hotels and whatever they can do for incentives, this is in full support of this. And if we get a small boutique hotel, that's going to be a five-star little, little boutique. Super great for, for them getting an incentive too, as opposed an incentive too, as opposed to the earlier rendition, which was a little bit higher, so I, I really appreciate the, the 25-room key and the, the others, the major and transformational.
Great, yeah, thank you so much for, well, sorry, Mayor Stevens.
No, I, no, I agree, totally, I, I agree. I mean, I like that, I mean, I think the last time we spoke about this, we talked about ensuring that we were, that this document was representative of various different options, so I mean, to Commissioner, to Scott's point about let's not disincentivize something, and I think this helps with that, right? So I appreciate that. And then, so my, my question for the, the whole advisory board is, from the cities, like, because Supervisor Zanger mentioned bringing it back to the board, and so do, do we need the cities to do the same, do you should, are we coming back to make some final decisions about this, and then bring it to our, our councils? So I'm just wanting to check in with the group around the process and what you need from cities.
I can say, my hope, and I think we talked about this initially, is that we can, because this, this would be the starting, the start of the conversation, and if we take it to the county, the cities can certainly take part or take the same template and iron it out. I, but if we go back and forth to this one and that one and that one, it's, this could take another year, year and a half to get this done, so the goal really is to get something that we agree on, for me, and then start to move it forward at the county level and with the goal of getting buy-in, and if there is, or if there are, if, let's just say the cities have issues with, you know, different aspects, so hopefully they're not significant challenges, because the goal is really that we all have the same program in place ultimately, because we don't want to necessarily compete with one another, the goal is just to get more bedrooms, hotel bedrooms here. We need, we need something, because that's, it goes in line with this Pinnacles issue, we need more hotel rooms to accommodate more people that want to visit.
And, and I think the step that we took in using Hollister's as a model, I think, and then we, we looked at some of the other cities, and then we wanted to look at, you know, what we have currently, I think that, that helped, and so we sort of like look at that, you know, some, something similar to what we're all doing already, and then move forward. I, I don't anticipate that there's gonna be any, any pushback, I think everybody is looking to find ways to incentivize more beds, yeah.
Mayor Jordan?
Um, who's, who's pushing, who, the, the county doesn't have a hotel, per se, so I guess my question would be, and, and for a TOT tax to be county-wide, it would have to be, what is it, 51%? So I, I thought Visit San Benito was spearheading that, so remind me where the county comes in in, in pushing this forward.
Because the county is trying to attract new hotel developers to come in and-
For the county, so-
Or, yes, because we deal with unincorporated, you know, ideally, we would find a hotel developer that would want to do something between Hollister and Pinnacles National Park, somewhere in that would be ideal, but we're open to, you know, other options, obviously. The county wants to, the county wants to attract hotels, but again, this, we're all in this together, so if we have a new hotel in Hollister or San Juan Batista or an incorporated county, we're all gonna benefit from that.
Yeah, if I may, I would, so when we talk about the Hospitality Priority Area, that actually exists, it's kind of a loop down in South County, so that'll, that ends up in here, but I don't believe any of that priority area is incorporated into the cities, per se. So it does take that into consideration. I think the cities are gonna probably, and I, this is an unresearched claim, so take it with a grain of salt, but I would imagine the revenue portion, or the, the renovation portion of this is gonna happen almost certainly in the cities, because there is no hotel inventory outside the cities, so kind of by default. And then much of the long-term captured value in ancillary benefit is gonna be captured in the cities, between restaurants, employment, and other vendors who are supporting any, you know, hospitality that is built in, in sort of unincorporated San Benito, most of that revenue will, I assume, be, be captured in the cities.
So this is technically a county committee, which incorporates the jurisdictions, but I think it would be, I would recommend that the cities take this and get feedback from your members as well, so that we can, if there are issues that come up, or if there is a significant challenge in the way that we can address that and try to all get on the same page. But, but if, but if there are, you know, roadblocks, and if one jurisdiction doesn't want to do it, for instance, that's not necessarily gonna stop the county from wanting to move forward, because we as a county do still have a goal of attracting hotels and generating revenue.
No, thank you for that.
Further, Supervisor Zanger?
Um, yeah, well, just, I actually had a question for the committee here that, that came up sort of last minute, when I was thinking about this meeting today, as far as the incentive program. This is, we're calling it the, kind of the Hotel Incentive Program, but I just want to get thoughts on whether or not we want to include, I guess, what we want to define as hotel, how far we want to broaden that, because there's like tiny house hotels, there's little cabin village hotels, which are increasingly popular, and so do we want to include that in hotels? I mean, I, I don't see why not, I think we want to encourage any kind of overnight stay, I would, as long as it meets these thresholds, obviously, so I just want to make sure that we have the discussion. Personally, I don't think there's a reason not to include all of that, and I don't want to just limit this to a specific type of like hotel, classic hotel, because like I said, we're trying to cast a wide net here. I don't know if anyone that, I know, I think, anyone has thoughts on that, I'd like to hear, so.
Any thoughts?
I, I would support that 100%, as being completely sort of aligned with the vision of the proposal.
I would as well.
Agreed.
Good, we should include that.
The only other comments I had were the numbers themselves, just to, I assume that those are based off of maybe comparables from other areas that, and there would have to be an understanding that those are, over time, would obviously have to be fluid, that we would be making adjustments and having to come back every X number of years to, to probably adjust the policy so that it's in line with inflation and, and even, it's not gonna be perfect off the bat, so we're gonna learn probably in the first few years, hopefully by attracting, you know, or not, hopefully by attracting hotel developers. But the numbers may have to be ironed out, I think there's probably an understanding of that.
These numbers are based on, on research of current practice, current build costs, emphasis on the word current, so I agree with you.
Great. Do we have further thoughts from the committee? And other than that, do we have a particular direction or motion for direction on what to do with this draft? Or basically the outline of what a draft may look like? Obviously, this is going to have to be further refined, but, but these are the basic sort of bullet points of what we, where we would start.
Question, so at the moment, further refinement, if these are current numbers, are you thinking the board to revise them and, and not take the recommendation as it currently is?
No, no, I'm, I'm just talking about over time, well, having a discussion, obviously, at the jurisdictional level, just to see if there's something we're missing, but I'm just talking about over time, having an understanding that the numbers will have to be fluid, that we're gonna have to revisit this every so often, basically, that's all I was pointing out.
So to have that added language to-
I think we can add that, that we should probably review this every three or four years or something, or, or two or three years, maybe, maybe review it every year at the beginning.
Yeah, I think at the beginning, review it every year, I think.
I've found that-
I think that is part of the draft already, is it?
Okay.
Is it, is, am I reading this wrong? I mean, it's 10-year, there's this duration recommendation, 10-year sunset provision with mandatory three, three-year review and seven-year review, so I think that's already in there? Is that what you're talking about?
I'm talking about-
Something different, okay, sorry, okay.
From an actual resolution standpoint, to bring it back to the respective jurisdictions after the first year.
Okay, 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 Mr. Sir, thank you.
There's sorts of policies, there are other policies we've worked out at the county level that, you know, need to be revisited, these sorts of economic development policies, you're not gonna get it perfect the first time around, basically, you're gonna have to revisit.
If, if I may, under Phase Three for Ongoing Management of the Program, there are two stipulations, one is annual performance reviews and program assessment with ROI analysis, the second stipulation is a three-year comprehensive evaluation with potential adjustments.
Great, perfect.
Terrified.
Yes, go ahead.
I just would say that my recommendation for direction would be to send this, send this current draft to the, the Board of Supervisors for review and the respective cities, they can look at adopting it as well.
So it's sending the, the draft to the jurisdictions and getting the conversation started to see if there's support behind those, that's a first, is there a second?
I would add one additional is-
Oh, let's get a second on the table first before further discussion.
Second, thank you.
Right. The other would be planning and legal as well.
The what?
Planning and legal might want to-
Of course, yeah, that's definitely an inherent, for sure. So this would go to the, yeah, the planning department would certainly, the planning departments would, would need to take a look. We have first, we have a second, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kosmicki?
Yes?
Commissioner Zanger?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Pillsbury?
Yes.
Five oh vote, motion passes.
Thank you very much, and thank you for everyone for working on that. That would take us to committee reports, do we have any committee reports? Any non-future agenda items, other than like ongoing matters that we have before us? We have the Pinnacles Transportation, is there anything else?
Yeah, just a, I guess a question, I'm maybe, I don't, I forgot exactly where we left off with the Arts Council, as far as what we were doing about monuments, monument signs, I don't know if that's connected to this Pinnacles kind of item we were talking about today, or if we need to check back in on that and see if we can push things forward on that?
Uh, yeah, that'd be great, if we can add that as a, at least to engage with the Arts Council to see if they have that in their schedule to be able to come back.
Yeah.
And the only other, the one that I thought more broadly was the Pinnacles branding itself, and just beyond the, the park and ride situation and the hotel incentive portion to, at some point, take that step back again and start, start to talk about how we can strategize branding.
I would just say that my, what I just suggested would just fall under that, and so we could just address that all at the same time.
Okay, so Pinnacles branding and/or Arts Council update. Anything further? No? All right, then we have nothing else, we are adjourned, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.